2018 regular board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Stand for the indication.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, God, for life. Thank you for every breath, God, that you give us through you, all and all. We pray, God, that you look over us in this meeting. God, we thank you that you have provided us a safe school year beginning so far, Lord. We thank you for that, Lord. We ask, God, that you'd wrap your hands around us, around all of our faculty, staff, every person, Lord, that's employed by Pickens County Schools, all of our students. God, we just pray for a safe and a healthy school year. God, we pray for this board, all those people here in attendance, Lord, we pray for them. God, just help us to make decisions that would be in the best interest of our students, Lord, and all and always. We ask these favors in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item will be to amend the agenda. I will make a motion to amend the agenda to move our recognition of student achievement to prior to executive session so that we're not keeping that family here on the necessary.
I'll second.
Second, Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, no. Motion carries. Next item will be to approve the amended agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Ms. Lewis, second to Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Wilson. Just get the honor of coming for you tonight to recognize one of our special students. We have numerous accomplishments, of course, we've got to celebrate, but Ms. Olivia Moore won the individual women's state pole vault championship back in the spring, and she's getting ready to head off to college, and we wanted to make sure we recognize this achievement with a state championship ring. Got a certificate for her, and we're going to ask her to come on up, come on up, Olivia, and celebrate this achievement for her, so please join me.
Let me tell you a couple of achievements that really is pretty awesome for us to have, to be able to claim. Olivia is one of our own. She vaulted 13 feet, 7 inches to set female for a state record all time at the state meet this year, and in the second highest female pole vault in Georgia High School Association history. And then she also finished fourth in the state in the 100 meter hurdle. So she's obviously a gifted athlete, and all of it is very well in school, too. Testament of that is she's going to Georgia Tech to be on the track and field team, and I think she departs Monday, so she will be heading off to school Monday. Wish her the best of luck, and I'm extremely proud of her. Glad we were able to do this for her, to let her know how much we appreciate her contributions to our community and our school. So, thank you, Olivia.
I just would like to say, Olivia, before she heads out the door, I've noticed that you were this high. It's amazing to me to see one of the most ladies brought into, and we wish you the very best at that school down in North Avenue. That Georgia Tech! But good luck. We are so proud to have you represent Pickens County.
Go yell jackals!
Next item will be executive session. I'll make the move that we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, or disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent, to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation, settlement, claims, administrative proceedings, or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the school district or an officer or employee, or in which the officer or employee may be directly involved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Motion carries. Okay, 6:50 PM, the motion was made that Mrs. White, second to Ms. Lewis, to come out of executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read?
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
Mr. Long, your second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Lewis. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Motion carries. Next item will be to amend this agenda once again, and add another executive session and to add it prior to board comments. Do I hear a second? So that motion will be... Executive session, approval of executive session minutes, and approval of personnel will move down to the end of our after-action items. Do I have a second on that?
One second.
Motion by myself, second to Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Motion carries. I'll delegate to Superintendent Fords. Mr. Chairman, first report of financial update, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. And I can't see the board over here, but we'll review our general fund. Just to give you an update, too, we are still in the process of closing out FY18. We will bring that final document to you. Just remind you that we are still collecting property tax revenue through the end of August as we are required to do as directed by the state. When you look at the July, excuse me, the August 6 report you have in front of you for general fund, you will see there are no property taxes listed here because those July and August revenues are backed into the prior year, as are most of the QBE monies for July. You'll see one small line of a little over $300,000, and those are typically for the 12-month employees and 12-month issues. So for, as of August 6, we have collected .89% of our budgeted revenues for this fiscal year, and we have expended 6.20% of our budgeted expenditures. Do I have any questions on this report? And we'll go to the sploost account. For the month of July, we collected sploost revenue of $439,326.01, earned the interest of $30882.17. As you can see, we had quite a few expenditures. Been a very, very, very busy summer. I do want to explain something that I did when you see over to the right, the former JES/district-wide, that is typically the warehouse that is going to be a district-wide warehouse. It's not a JES campus anymore. So we will re-code that from JES slash now JMS to now be, we don't want to call it central office, it will be a district-wide building then. So I know that kind of doesn't make sense, but we do have to code the location for any kind of fixed asset like that. At the end of July, our balance was $8,429,494.37. Do y'all have any questions about the expenditures or the revenue for the month of July? Okay, and we'll move to the summary report. Of course, we're liking in the last couple of months revenue that has come in. Our 12-month average is just over $400,000, so we have picked up a little speed there. We're glad to see that. And at this time, do want to give you an update. Our audit for FY17 has not closed yet. We were there very last audit, and it's kind of gotten involved in some folks' vacations, and it's not ours, it's theirs. We anticipate getting to do the exit maybe in about three weeks, maybe four. They're still asking for a few things, so they're just doing a little cleanup. And as soon as we do the exit, then it will still be several weeks before you get a report. So this is by far the latest that we've ever been still doing in FY17, or, you know, two prior years' audit. But as soon as it is closed, we will let you know the results, and we will let you know when to expect to get that report because it will come directly to you. Also, we understand we should be receiving the tax dividends anytime. I do not have anything definite from them yet on when I will receive it, but as soon as I do, superintendent will know, and we'll get that information out to you.
Which was the audit we just completed with special education?
That actually was for FY16 and the first quarter of '17. That is, that was not the Georgia Department of Audits and Accounts audit, that is a Medicaid audit.
The Medicaid.
We have a multitude of audits and monitoring that we go through at different times, and they are typically on a delay of some sort, a year or two, year and a half. So we have been working in four different years, so it's been kind of...
That one we did, we did not receive the official report, but we did score 1% compliant in every area of that particular audit.
Very well. Very pleased.
Anything else to say? Mr. Shea.
We received part of the agenda yesterday's members. Here's an update for today's members.
Hot off the press. Hot off the press. Stay there five minutes.
Not much of an adjustment, but a body here and there. Trying to break this up as illegible as possible. A lot of information goes into this. Top chart is your student enrollment as of today. That means these are the students that we are still expecting to show up. They haven't officially withdrawn, they haven't enrolled anywhere else, so we still must carry them on our books, and that's 4,438 students. The next part of the chart is the students, if we back out those kids that have not shown up yet, and those are actual body counts of who's sitting in class right now, and that's 4,355 students. And this, the third section breaks down which location those no-shows are sitting at. So we're sitting at 83 students that are still in limbo. And I say in limbo, most of them have been contacted. They've either moved throughout the state, they're in a district that hasn't started yet, they've left the state, and they've told us. We cannot withdraw them or take them off our books until we get a proof that they've enrolled somewhere else. So they're still liable to for us until they actually start school. So, and what I did was I compared those, that the second, which is the warm body count, the second part of the chart, to the very first day of school. And the very first day of school, we had 4,318 warm bodies that showed up. So we're up 120 students since day one. So we found some of those no-shows, new students enrolled, we had some kids transferring from the high school, that kind of stuff. The next one, the next page is just some withdrawal codes and some enrollment codes, just for your information, to find out why students are leaving us, or where they're going, and why they're coming, or where they're coming from, or the withdrawal codes. We had 25 kids withdraw to go to homeschool, but directly below that, the enrollment codes, we had 21 that came back from another year. So 25 are going to homeschool, 21 are coming back. So we do have to record one death from over the summer. We entered one, we enrolled one student from another country, transfer out of state, we had 11, entering from another state, we had 28. So people are moving, transfer to another public school, and this is where we gain and lose most of our populations up and down this 575-515 corridor. They go to Gilmer, they go to Cherokee, up and down, up and down. So we so far have lost 108 somewhere in the state, but we gained 273. Transfer to a private school, three. Transferred from another Georgia district, I'm sorry, the 273 are kindergartners, sorry. The next one is transferred from another Georgia, 146 have come in from another county. Transferred to a, from a private school, 27 students have come back to private school. The last page, this is just a breakdown of the withdrawals, not by school, but by grade level, so we can kind of see what grades are kind of leaving us, you know, and for what reasons. I thought maybe that'd be interesting, could take a look at that. I do have some other numbers, just for reference purposes. Day seven is what, the very first chart, is 4,438 students. That's what we have on our books. Last year at this time, we had 4,473. So that was as of this first board meeting last year, 4,473. Two years ago, the 16th, 17th school year, we had 4,444. At this time of the board meeting, so... That's not what we end the school with, but that's what we start the school year with. 1,438 this year, 1,473 last year, 4,444 the year before. Questions about the enrollment numbers? Anything else you'd rather see?
I might can catch up now and get something done. Been very busy. We weren't ready for kids to enter the school. Buildings were ready to go. Few little things like this and some side projects going on that weren't totally ready, but we were ready for students, and that's the main thing. I really do want to thank my staff at maintenance. They went well beyond this year. They worked very hard. We got a lot done in-house and through the contract and services we did for some of this. It was a busy, busy summer, a little bit stressful. I'm ready to have a good year, though, because I'm ready to, I'm glad the kids are back in school. My life looks better. Transportation. With all the changes, redistricting and the wind of time changes that school starts and ends and that kind of stuff, it was a challenge, and we knew it was going to be. We knew starting up that it would be a challenge, and we talked to y'all about that several times. The mornings have gone great. It's been amazing how well the mornings have flown, and I got to give the principals a pat on the back. They have worked really hard for us, with us, in helping us make this work and flow, and giving us ideas and suggestions to help their campuses because they're there every day. That first morning I came in here, and I was like, holy crap, this morning? I was amazed. But about 4:30 that evening, and that radio was blowing up, and three phones were ringing, and I looked at Dr. Wilson, and I said, "I'll see you in a little bit." I got the transportation. It was a little bit of chaos. And most of it is normal, overly zealous parents wanting to take their kids to school, pick their kids up the first week or so. It adds a lot of traffic and congestion to our streets and roads, and I know y'all know that. Y'all probably hated it as bad as we did. But it's tapering off. We're getting a handle on it. We tweaked some things at several schools. It's working better. We're getting into the timeframe of we want to have every kid home by 5:15 to 5:30. We're close. We're really close. I hope we get it to the 5:15 range. First day, to be honest, it was 6:30, and I was sweating bullets. I was like, holy crap, we can't do this. Parents are going to pull us. But it's got better.
Those three roads that were closed that...
Huh? Oh, yeah.
Three roads closed because of the flood.
Yeah, it rained, it flooded, it was something. I do want to give a shout out to the sheriff's office, Shane Paget, Sergeant Paget, our SRO lead, they bailed us out. They would stop traffic, drive their car down, get the bus, and bring it in for us down the wrong side of traffic. They would help us that much. But now I think we've got a decent game plan. I mean, we can still tweak and get better, and I hope it does, but we've got a great community. They all jumped in, helped us. It was amazing what all went on. We have a new driver training class. I am shorthanded on buses, I tell you this every time, and I'm sorry, but we've had some sick people, some things happened that we didn't expect. We have no subs left, so it's really critical for field trips and for athletic events right now. We're pulling staff out of the offices to drive, and of course, coaches are helping us out. We have 10 lined up for the next class. We're going to expedite. We hope we can keep them. With your help and support of transportation this year to start the year, I think we will keep some up, and I appreciate that, and the staff does, too. So we're working toward it. I think if we can get five of the 10 onboard, we can make some progress then. We'll be in good shape, but keep working toward it and trying hard. All our new buses came in, radios in, camera system in, they're on the road, they started the first day. This is great. It's been a good thing. Nutrition, and she'll come next time, probably, or as soon as she gets the free and reduced stuff, that can share some of those numbers with you. That takes a little while because they're processing applications every day as hard as they can get. The SROs, of course, we weren't in school, we didn't have a report, so that's all that's left there. And I hope you liked the room. Dr. Wilson, and I, and Tony, and everybody here, I've had about 300 people tell me everything was wrong with it, but as we were going through trying to fix it, so it's been fun. It looks very much important. But we had to have a meeting room, and since we took it. I know you've seen the room over there with all the training center. That's wonderful. That's going to help all these people. They love it because they got a place to have classes. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nice to be in here. I haven't been here in a while. So let me first thank you guys for all y'all do, and thanks, because I know it's been a long summer, and so since I don't get a form very often, thank you for all you guys that really appreciate it, all you for the kids, and I can see it happening often. As a token, football, we made shirts this year. I got you guys a shirt. Martha got it. I'll sell you one, too, girl. But we got you got the shirt purposely made it non-football and non-athletic, so you can just, you know, try to be a little unified. And Martha, I had you guys one, have GHSA passes, too, for everybody. Now, for real stuff I'm here for. We've got three out-of-state field trips that we've got to get board approved to participate in. The first was a girls' cross-country, which would be seven girls for the varsity cross-country team, was requesting permission, Trump pins called in Florida on September 22. Bus club pays for everything except they would need a bus. So they would need your permission to go on that trip. You want me to just talk about all three of them, Dr. Wilson? We had to vote separately.
I'll let me do all three.
Okay. The second field trip is for our boys' cross-country, but the boys and the girls go separate on out, on overnight trips. And so the boys are actually going to Kentucky on September the 8th, are requesting permission for that. Same thing, I think it'll be seven students and two adults, and they would need a bus. The Bus Club will pay for everything else. The third trip is actually in February, but it's soccer. They went ahead and done the paperwork, so we're going to get it on the agenda for a February trip for our boys and our girls' soccer. Two different weeks, so same thing, we don't take the girls and the boys together, but February 14th for the boys, February 21st for the girls. Same deal, Bus Club will pay. Each group's taking 16 students, but they also would take a bus. So any questions about any of those trips? Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys, really, for all you do. I mean...
I would just start at the beginning. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the girls' cross-country out-of-state field trip?
I make a motion to approve the girls' out-of-state cross-country.
Second. Motion by Ms. Lewis, second to Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Motion carries. Your motion for the approval of the boys' cross-country out-of-state field trip?
I make a motion to approve the boys' cross-country out-of-state field trip.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long, second to Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Motion carries. Now, do I hear a motion for the approval of the soccer out-of-state field trip?
I make the way to approve the soccer out-of-state field trip.
Your second?
I'll second.
Motion by Miss Denny, second to Ms. White. Any discussion? All in favor? Five, unopposed. Next will be the naming of the alternative virtual school. Mr. Chairman, this has been one of the most difficult things to name.
Mr. Chairman, this has been one of the most difficult things to name. We have thrown everything out there, but recommending that we name it the Dragons Opportunity Virtual Academy, Dova. Unless one of y'all have a better suggestion. We'll gladly take it.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve that name, is it presented?
Yes, you do.
Is there your second?
I'll second.
Motion by Sam, seconded by Ms. White, is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be the FY nineteen CTAE local plan.
Board? Dr. Wilson? I think you guys are aware that every year when you get federal grant money, it has to be approved by you guys. And so when I first came on board last year, we just had a five-year review, so all the, you guys have a five-year review in front of you. The outcomes from that, any, anything that they made as suggestions is what we're going to approve on. We're going to do exactly what the state said, plus a couple of other things, so. So you see the review, that's how we base what we're going to do on. The guidelines and the presentation, which you guys have the presentation, all right? So if you'll look in there, you'll see, see our new little bit that we're going to go with. The local plan, basically that tells you what Perkins Act is, I think you guys are familiar with it. The purpose of the plan, the guidelines which Amy and I have to go by when spending the funds. Were, were pretty critical, make sure we do that, know the plan and so forth. Mandated activities, have all that built into our, into our plan. Just a quick rundown of what we will be spending it on, we have three new teachers in CTAE and two new programs. So professional development, of course, for those, you know, is my priority, those, those three. And then the others, just continued professional development. Also, we're going to spend some money on improving our, in the pathway assessment outcomes, as we do every year. So some of the funds, you'll see the Perkins Plus, that's where the, you know, PA monies will go. The program improvement, which is my big grant, that's of course where the travel, some equipment will come from. Oh, there's some software that we want to purchase too to continue to update. Professional development grant, that's a, that's kind of goes to the state, we don't see that, but then they let us go to things for free. So we kind of share that statewide, so that's a consortium. And then you'll see the state grant CTA, the, the other grants, I went ahead and put the ag grants in there so you can see what those were. Apprenticeship grants, extended day grants, and the way those work is we just, what we ask for is to get a portion. So it doesn't fund everything, but we do split a big one with all the teachers. So explanation of extended day, extended year, if you don't understand that. See what else we got here. This does, of course, also, I can use the grant to support our CTSOs. For instance, last year we won the gold medal, the, the grant helped them go up there and to participate. So I paid for that. Supervision grant, of course, goes towards my salary. And then I also put in there, you know, we have to spend at least what the grant is, of course, we usually spend double that with our FTEs. Our, we got a little bit more this year because it's growing. I expect we'll get more next year because of the two new classes, it lags a year, so we'll get some more for these two new programs for FTEs. All our program pathways, I might have read them all out, but they're growing. And just so you'll know too, we're probably going to, we got the new big jumbotron down at football field, so we're going to probably add a small pathway along with Angela, that I have one or two students in, there's an extra pathway for that and we got a couple that are interested in that, so we're going to do it. Just two or three kids, but it'll still be within one of her other classes, so it won't be a FTE problem. I think that's got, any big questions about this coming year for CTE? We had a really good year last year, we're probably having a better one this year. Just always two gold medals, that's tough. Thank you.
Thank you. I hear a motion for the approval of the FY nineteen CTAE local plan as presented?
Make a motion that we accept the CTAE plan as presented.
Second. Motion by Ms. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Long, is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be the approval of the spending resolution for September. If you want to speak on that, we know what it is, it's routine.
One more time, hopefully this will be our last one. We do have to ask permission from the board to spend money one more month, for the month of September, with a limit of one-twelfth of the prior year's budgeted expenditure, so we'll ask for that one more time. Hopefully this will be it and we can get the final budget approved once we receive the tax adjustments.
I hear a motion for the approval of the spending resolution for September 2018?
I make a motion to approve the spending resolution for September 2018.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Finley, is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next will be minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the July twelfth regular and the July twentieth call board meetings. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Sam, seconded by Ms. Lewis, is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, or disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation, or rating of a public officer, or employee, or to interview applicants for the position of superintendent. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. At 8:51 PM, a motion was made by Ms. Finley, seconded by Mr. Long, come out of executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read?
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes as read.
Mr. Long, seconded by?
I'll second.
Ms. White. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Five, none opposed, motion carries. Next item will be the approval of personnel, I'll make a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, opposed, carries. Gets us to board comments.
We have our calendar.
Do we need to look for some dates?
We do. I'd like to set up a call meeting to discuss our test scores and just do a year in review and then also plans for this next year. Like to do if I could, if we could, that last, you know, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of August.
I'm available Wednesday.
I'm available Wednesday.
I'm available Wednesday. All these smokes. I found a date, everybody. Twenty-nine.
Wednesday, no.
Wednesday, twenty-nine.
Wednesday to twenty-nine.
It's easier on that end of the table.
What time? What time do y'all want to get started?
Six o'clock. What are you thinking?
Probably about an hour, hour and a half.
Sure.
Well. Probably about an hour. It's just a, it's just a.
Does Martha have a comment over there? Sure sounded like she.
All right, maybe two hours.
I'm good with whatever time.
We're retired down here, we can do it.
We can do it earlier if we need to.
We can do it earlier. How early can you do it?
I can do whatever y'all want to, I'm easy.
He's so accomplished.
I'm caught.
Five, five minutes. Five PM on this train.
Yeah, I need to find out from Amy on the timeline.
And comments, or comments?
Now just, thanks to everybody, most of whom are not here anymore, but all the folks who have done such a great job of things that I've been running this year. And all the work that it took this summer to get that accomplished, I know it was a huge feat and they're still working.
Next item is adjourned, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll be glad to make the motion to adjourn.
Second item.
To my Louis.
Louis, any discussion? All in favor? I vote, we are adjourned.